All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees to order on Monday, September 19th. It's 6:31 on my watch. We are holding this meeting as a hybrid, meaning that the meeting is on Zoom as well as here in the Village Hall. In addition to that, for those that just want to call in, there's a call-in and an ID at the top of the agenda along with a Zoom link too. So with that, we'll move right on. We have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next up, we have public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If the public does wish to speak, we ask them to share their name, their address, their municipality, and as well as hold our comments to no more than three minutes in case we have a lot of folks who would like to speak. And with that, we do have at least one in the room here, One Community Bank, regarding the offer to buy a property. Jeff, you're here. You're from Oregon and you just want to make a general statement and please feel free.
Jonathan, don't get my phone, Jeff as well.
Yes, no, 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 please.
Please turn your mic on too if you would, so people in the Zoom can hear. It's right on the top.
Pull it towards you. There you go.
Testing. Well, good evening. I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Jeff Burstless with One Community Bank. I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Retail Officer.
And I'm Steve Piattar. I'm President and Chief Executive Officer of One Community Bank.
So we appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. We, this is our first opportunity to be in front of this body and we hope we get the opportunity to work together. Steve and myself and a couple of our colleagues have enjoyed working with some of the staff, including folks in the room, Matt, Aaron, and JJ. So good to see you folks this evening. And I'll just say a little bit about One Community Bank and who we are and the general tenor of my comments is just to let this body know how excited we are about the possibility of coming to Cottage Grove. And so we know you'll be talking about our offer later this evening. We are currently the largest community bank in Dane County and we're proud to say that community is our middle name. So, you know, we do take the community support piece very seriously. We like to say we have big bank capabilities, but a small bank personality, and that's something our clients have come to appreciate about us. Our mission is to serve our clients, support colleagues, and invest in our communities. And that mission resonates with us as we think about the prospects of coming here to Cottage Grove and robustly supporting and investing in the Cottage Grove community. We are pro-growth organization with the vision to be the best billion-dollar bank in the world, and I think we're working well towards that. From our interactions with the village staff, it feels to us like our values align very well with those of the village. So again, that just goes to our excitement about this prospect. And I would tell you that as we think about Cottage Grove, you know, we've had the opportunity in recent years to do many projects in the village. And as you drive through town, I'm sure you all get the opportunity to see some of the One Community Bank financed by signs. So it's good evidence of the projects that we've been privileged to be able to do. We also have many colleagues in our organization that live in the village of Cottage Grove and they've been instrumental in helping us understand the possibilities here and have been very encouraging to us. We're excited about the village, the growth prospects, the mix of consumer and businesses, families, great mix of types of businesses. And just, so it's stated if our offer is, if we work out terms on our offer, our plan would be to build a beautiful full-service facility that I think everyone would be proud of and that we would open in the later part of 2023. So we are excited for the board to review that offer later this evening. We're hopeful for the opportunity to work more together with this body and we're eager to support and invest in the village of Cottage Grove. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak and be with you all.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the Zoom or in the room that would like to speak? All right, then we'll move right on. Item five is discussing consider the meeting minutes from a regular board meeting held on August 15th. Any questions, comments, or edits?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. We heard you, Brittany. All right. Next up, if the, if the board is okay, we'd like to move the EMS Commission comments and up next because Chief is being asked to be at the Town Board as well this evening. So if anybody has any concerns, otherwise we'll take it right to Sarah to kind of give a walkthrough of the meeting that happened and then turn it over to Chief, I think more so probably to the budget.
Yes, and I think we've had two meetings actually.
Yes.
Village meetings. So both practices are in the village practice tonight. But we know we did have a ceremony, a meeting, who was joining at 2:00 PM. And while the end came comparable to where I was at at 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
And I know this board is always wondering the coverage for our station. And so in August, our station was covered 97% of the time. So those were the highlights of the meeting. And then we'll talk about the budget tonight. Anything else you think?
The agreement? Or are you talking about the first meeting?
Yeah, right. Yeah, the agreement. And the agreement was agreed on. So yeah, motion has drafted.
Yeah, two minor edits from what our legal team have put together and I think everybody's pleased with, with the agreement. And as everybody on the board knows, that agreement, the current agreement expires at the end of the year. So it's very good to kind of wrap this up. The only outstanding item is performance metrics and we'll cover that at the next meeting and get those sewn into the rest of it. And then that will be the last piece of it, other than the agreement being formally approved by the various municipalities.
Yeah, and the performance metrics were the reason why it's not on the agenda for approval tonight.
Correct. Right.
Okay, so in front of you, you have, as part of our additional agenda item, is a discussion of the 2023 budget, which was also approved at the EMS Commission level. There's a bit of a narrative there to explain, just to give an overview of the district and then explain any adjustments to budget lines from 2022 to 2023 that were made. Biggest budget line adjusted is in anything related to staff. So it was decided at the EMS Commission to add two additional full-time staff to begin January 1, 2023, to bring our complement up to 12. There's some reasons for that. They're all covered in the written document, but it's largely because of the unsure nature of our current casual employees, the recommendation from PAA and their staffing analysis and department study that we add for full-time staff immediately. We were able to, I think with surety, know that we could add some dollars into revenue and know that we'll be able to collect those. So that helped to defray some of the overall cost to each of the communities of the added We didn't partake in any other initiatives as part of the budget. In fact, we really drilled down, especially in medical supplies. Typically, we had a stance of because of the uncertainty in the cost that we would just annually automatically increase that budget line by 10% over the course of the past five to 10 years. With some of the stability we found with using a vending program through Dane County and the work of our internal supply staff, we're pretty sure that we'll be able to make it with the, I think we rounded up to $50,000 from something, just a little bit less than that. So with the great help of Mandy and the rest of the staff, we were able to look at all the budget lines and determine what was a necessary increase and request that and what we could hold the line on and not need to increase at all. I think in years past, typically this would have been a request where we would have had a vote and an approval of it, but we're taking a little bit of a different approach this year. So you get to see it and ask them questions this time and not have to worry about making a decision.
As long as you're up there, you might as well update everybody on the ambulance too as well.
Oh, yes. So outside of the budget, something that we're paying for this year as a capital expense is the ambulance. I talked to the retailer today and didn't actually ask them if it got picked up or not because I had other things on my mind. We know it's going to be in Wisconsin this week. We were able to review it about 10 days ago, found some items that needed to be repaired on, prior to it shipping from Canada. They thought they were going to have some trouble finding a shipping company to get it from Canada to Wisconsin. That ended up not being as much of a problem as they thought it was going to be. There's probably about two weeks worth of work that needs to go into for installations of radios and the cotton load system and some other local stuff that the plant doesn't do. Actually, more so it's found by our vendor that they can do it for a little bit less expensive, a little bit fewer dollars to us than what the plant would do. As a for instance, we upgrade the bumper. If we were to send the bumper to Canada, first of all, we'd have to ship it there and the plant's going to charge over $3,000 to install it where for about $1,000, we can have it installed here in Wisconsin. We're still hoping for, optimistically, I'd like to say October 1st, but I don't think that's realistic. October is what I've said, is that we'll put that in service in October. We've reached out to everyone we can think of to have that line up to include the state ambulance inspector.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Any questions from trustees regarding the budget?
I'll preemptively answer the other burning question. No news on the AFG grant.
Yes, I didn't think there was.
They did some more awarding on Friday and we weren't one of them.
And again, just as a reminder, everyone, that is for replacement of radios, so.
Well, I appreciate having the opportunity to review this and hopefully have this go through our normal budget process this year so that we, as trustees, are able to see our full scope of our budget rather than having it piecemealed like we did previous years. So thank you.
Sure. It'll, it'll be interesting to see how it plays out for us in that by the time the village budget, budget is physically approved in early December, if, if our piece of the budget weren't, weren't to be approved, we could potentially be into January or February before our budget goes through the rest of the processes it needs to be approved. So I think there's some, some work that we can do to discuss how we can both meet our needs.
Yeah, and you'll have-
I don't, I don't foresee the board would wait until the last night that they could approve the budget to make any changes here. You would know much sooner if there were concerns.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I, I have a schedule to read, so that when I, when I read it, I see final approval being in December. There's nothing in there that said, well, at this point here, we're going to, for EMS, make a decision, so.
It's the same way with every, every department, but there's a, after the workshop in November, the, the board approves a preliminary budget that gets published. And generally speaking, there's not any substantial changes after that point. There might just be some line item tweaks. So for sure, in November, you'd have pretty good assurances of where the budget sits. And then some of this is also, we're required by law to have a public, a public hearing on the budget. So approving portions of the budget and making them final before a public hearing isn't, isn't a good process either, so.
Thank you for the additional information.
Any questions for Chief? And again, a lot of this is driven from, you know, the study that we, that the commission put out with PAA and we supported. So this is just lockstep in with, with those recommendations, including the performance measures that are coming up.
Again, I'd, I'd have to say if there was a performance measure that as an individual on the board you had in mind that we should use, aside from the ones we kind of key in on our response time or shoot time, which is the amount of time it takes us to get the page and go out the door, is very controllable by us. The other one is the overall response time, which would be time from page to the time the unit arrives on scene. Those are the two big ticket ones. The other things that the study has suggested has been, you know, make a metric for vehicle replacement so that if it's out of service for more than 90% of the time, you'd look to preemptively replace it as opposed to keeping it on a schedule. We've already established a vehicle replacement schedule. Our vehicles have been very reliable to us, so it's not anything that would be on our radar and I'm not trying to preempt a conversation about vehicle replacement either. So we've had 90% plus reliability out of our vehicles. But those are all things that would be as a for instance. And if you had something else in mind for us to discuss next month, please bring it to Sarah or Brittany to discuss.
Very good. Anything else, Sarah? All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you for allowing me to go first and you all have a good night.
You too. All right. Then we'll move back to the agenda here and that is on new business. And the first item under new business is discussing consider directing attorneys to draft an ordinance regarding fertilizer application. Melissa has a memo in the packet, so Melissa, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, John. So we all received the email from a constituent, a resident in Cottage Grove here with concerns about fertilizer on his, on sidewalks and driveways in our community. As he was out walking, his dog noted that there was spillover from a lawn, which is bad for stormwater horses and hurting pets and who knows, anybody running around without shoes on maybe, which is a whole different issue. But I then checked with our staff as to whether we had any ordinances regarding this issue and we don't, but other communities do. So we brought it, I brought it before the board here to determine if we should have our village attorneys draft an ordinance to have it on the books so that we can address it if this happens in the future. And Larry, are there, I mean, will it take you a lot of time to do it if we were to approve it?
Looks like it's already done. Just got to figure out where to put it.
But it doesn't include like what the penalties are or how we would enforce-
Yeah, we, that's what I mean. When we decide where to put it, there's, you know, we'll have to, if the existing penalty for that set of restrictions of public nuisances or whatever are appropriate, then great, we'll just use the same penalties as any other type of violation that falls in that category and not redraft it.
And would, what department would go out and enforce it then?
I think it would probably be, you know, what I was thinking initially was that it's, it's, the provision is a requirement of your property maintenance. So it would be similar to not shoveling your sidewalk or if you allowed your grass to grow too long, other than in May. So that's what I was thinking initially, so.
Is that part of-
Is that Public Works?
The weed? Is that the weed?
We could add it to the weed commissioner.
Weed commissioner, that's what-
The weed commissioner.
No, that JJ's not the weed commissioner. He nods every time we say add something to the weed commissioner.
If you approve it, I might even have it drafted by the end of this meeting. Pretty simple if you want it.
Okay. Any questions? Again, go ahead.
Oh, I was very interested to hear from this resident and had noticed the problem before and I look forward to a good recommendation and thanks, Melissa, for doing some research into this. I think stormwater runoff is a big issue and if we can prevent fertilizers from going into our stormwater ponds, I think that that would be great in addition to keeping it off the paws of our furry residents of Cottage Grove.
Or those that wear bare feet.
That's right.
Careful, stub your toe. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I would make a motion to direct attorneys to draft an ordinance regarding fertilizer application.
Second.
All right. Thanks, Heidi. Thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next-
I still make one comment on the-
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't moved to the next item.
All right. I was wondering maybe if Gabe has any ideas on how we might be able to get that word out to various contractors that work in the village that are the ones like spreading the poison. I don't know, just food-
JJ and I can definitely talk about that to see what we do currently. And again, website, social media, we're doing news out, news flash and kind of go with what we've done in the past.
Thanks.
All right. Next up then is discussing consider holding our November 7th meeting of the Village Board of Trustees to virtual on the 7th. And this is related to the election the following day and how this room needs to be configured, I think. Any questions regarding that? Any concerns?
I would make a motion to have the village board meeting on November 7th be virtual only.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Is there a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up is to discuss and consider Resolution 2022-19, Resolution Acknowledgement of Kurt and Gail for all their work they've done for the League of Municipalities. Both these individuals have served the League for a number of years and are retiring. The League has asked us and all communities to recognize their efforts. So we do have a draft resolution in the packet for consideration. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments on the board.
I just want to note that they have been really terrific for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. I've seen them at a number of events that they hold and that are really beneficial for our communities. So I appreciate having this opportunity to acknowledge their work and would move to approve the resolution.
All right. Is there a second? Thanks, Melissa.
Second.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All the resolutions will be presented to Kurt and Gail at the La Crosse meeting that they're going to be at, their last one. So as well as I'm sure some sort of cake and whatever, recognizing them. So this is, again, ours will be included with any other community that has recognized them through a resolution.
Well, now you just wrote this. What are you saying that we would do?
Oh. I think they don't-
Because they watch our meetings all the time.
All right, well, cat's out of the bag. Next up, maybe they'll skip that part. We can, discussing consider the ordinance 06-2002022, amending chapter 19, 12, excuse me, chapter 12, 19, parentheses, parentheses 3, parentheses B, quorum for the Community Development Authority. Aaron, you've got something to eat on this?
Sure. So currently, the ordinance specifies that four are required for a quorum. There's a lot of state statutes that regulate how CDAs are formed and operate, but there's nothing in the state statute about how many you need for a quorum. Currently, we only have five members on the CDAs, so four can sometimes be problematic as it was this month. So if we change it to the majority of commissioners, we'll only need three under the current format, which would make it a little bit easier for us to get stuff done.
So what you're saying is we could have had a meeting had we had this?
If we had this before. This, that is what inspired us to do it.
I, I can't help but giggle. That's 15 minutes we'll never get back.
Sounds like a motion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution, I'm sorry, approve the ordinance amendment as written.
And thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up, again, new business is discussing consider liquor license application for Cozy Nook Cafe, AKA Cozy Nook Cafe, for licensing year July 2022 through June 2023. Lisa.
So you will notice in your agenda, you're approving a conditional use further down in the Plan Commission, so this would be subject to that approval. So if you, whoever, if you're going to make a motion, you might want to put that in your, your motion as well as a little bit getting the cart before the horse. So this is standard application. There were no concerns with the background check. It would be a Class B alcohol license, which would be fermented malt beverage and wine. And the conditional use was approved at the Plan Commission.
Yes. Just going to say that. Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Can you just remind me where it is, where this is going to be?
Sure. So it was previously Village Cafe.
It's the old Sunny's Cafe.
Sunny's Cafe. Oh.
They want to do a, I spend a lot of time at Facebook, they want to do a fish fry on Fridays and I think they want to serve alcohol. I don't know if they want to serve alcohol. That was actually going to be my question. Do they want to serve alcohol during breakfast hours or just at the fish fry?
Be very European if that's the case.
I don't judge. I just, I was curious if the hours, like, did the, did the use permit dictate hours of usage?
That would be an Aaron question as far as hours and usage, if that was part of the-
I'm, I can't-
Yes, we are.
You just said Larry and I lost it. I can't keep a straight face. Does the application dictate, and I'm, I'm looking through the application, but I don't see anything, any hours of usage or hours of serving for alcohol?
That would be based on our ordinance and by law.
We're now additional restrictions above our-
Okay. That's all I needed to hear, so.
Any other questions? Comments?
I would make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Cozy Nook Cafe LLC, AKA Cozy Nook Cafe, for licensing year July 2022 to June 2023, subject approval of the conditional use permit.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up, we have discussing consider approving staff to apply for the election security sub-grant from Wisconsin Election Commission. Lisa again.
Thanks, John. So the Wisconsin Election Commission has renewed the sub-grant for security to municipalities program again this year. And I think we may have a need that we can use this grant money. We have Johnson Black looking at- We have Johnson Block looking into it. I don't have their recommendation yet in my hand, but I wanted to get it before you so that if that is something that we can utilize, that we'd have their approval and then we could submit the application. It goes into here, you know, what it could be used for. So I'm anxiously waiting to hear from Johnson Block to see where those needs may be.
Did, did they allude at all to any, did they give you, tip their hat to what, what they were thinking about in, as far as what they were going to recommend or?
Johnson Block? Not yet. Larry was hoping to have something to me on Friday, however, that didn't happen. So I told him the way that it was listed on the agenda, that we were just seeking approvals so that if, if it were viable for us to use these, these monies, that we could submit for that application. But as soon as I get that, I can certainly send it out to all of you.
Is it, because the way I'm reading the, the memo, like, item B, you know, professional IT support, is the idea that, that Johnson Block would recommend the work and then do the work that they recommend through the grant?
Correct.
Okay.
That is my understanding of how it would work through the state, that's what they have done. You have to have the understanding that there are 1,800 plus municipalities and so they all come in different sizes.
Sure.
So a lot of them don't have IT companies on staff. So that was some of the purpose behind this grant back in 2019 and then going forward. Because as we all know, we all operate in the list vote system, which is the statewide voter registration system through the state. And so we want to make sure that all of our partners are protected as much as possible for that security reason.
Sure.
So it's kind of a wide gamut of what these funds could be used for. But I certainly think we might have some need as well as a community that we could tap into that.
I know it's, it's $1,200 for the grant, is there, to your knowledge, is there an approved vendor list or you can use it for any vendor? Again, it's only $1,200, so I don't, I don't think they're going to go to that degree, but is there?
Right. I think they tried to, when they first were exploring this possibility of these grant funds, I think they had put a survey of two municipal clerks of what vendors they currently use or if you had a vendor that you really liked to work with or were great. More so again, I think to help foster those smaller communities that didn't have IT people on staff. So I think they were trying to help as many, but they didn't come up what, these are the things that you need to work with.
I didn't think, I mean, at $1,200, that, that would be an awful lot of calories to expend for $1,200 to have an approved vendor list. But I figured I'd just ask, just in case, because I, I've seen this in other places where usually a dollar amount's a little bit higher, but like, you know, just to make sure Johnson Block's on the approved list, if there was such a list. But again, since there isn't, this is not a, not an issue.
Yeah. So the first time around, I believe the grant was like in the neighborhood of $600.
Oh, okay.
So it was much lower.
Much lower.
But I think a lot of it was because computers, operating systems were coming to expiration or had expired. And so it was more a push for those communities to get new computers. And now this time around, it's kind of amping it up a little bit more on the IT and firewalls, that type of security part of it.
I'll move to approve staff to apply for the election security sub grant from WEC if there's a need.
All right. Thanks Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, next we move then to reports from village boards, commissions and committees. First up is Parks, Recs and Forestry. Heidi?
Great, thank you. So we met back on August 25th and we continued our discussion on the Parks and Open Space Plan. Erin brought some data for us to compare on kind of national benchmarks for where we sit compared to all communities and then communities under 20,000 population. So it's interesting to look at that data. We talked about pollinator garden locations and village parks. So we've kind of narrowed it down to Governor Taylor. And so there will be more coming on that, working with the Scouts Senior Year Project. So, you know, something will happen then this school year on that. We also approved the Boy Scout Troop to have campouts and talked about our Parks and Recreation Project update. So we have the West Lawn subdivision, Red Hawk Park. So there's work going on there, waiting for the playground equipment to come in. We have Community Park, the trail's been paved and the pickleball courts have been paved. We have to wait 30 days before the coating can be put on that to continue that. It has to be above a certain temperature, so kind of seeing how that goes. We have Bachan Park and there was a pre-construction meeting on Skate Park. And I'm not sure if there's any, there's moving this week, I think there's, not yet?
Not yet.
I think those are three main projects. There was an article in the newspaper about it, if you had a chance to read that. Then, let's see, then we have a separate item, aside from the meeting, that came up in the meantime. And Sean did, I'm not sure Sean's on, he's traveling for a conference.
I am here.
Okay. Did you want me to toss it over to you for the irrigation memo or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
If you guys remember, can everybody hear me? I'm sorry, the internet is supposed to catch you here.
We can hear you.
Great. If you remember back in the approved 2022 budget, we had irrigation to Bachan, their city named Fireman's Park. When we, from the time we approved the budget to actually doing it, it went up a little bit above $3,000. The board approved taking that additional $15,000 out of our Park Development Fund. And since then, it's increased another $7,500. Most of that is due to some unforeseen irrigation issues with how the water travels from right field to left field. If you can think about Fireman's Park, right field is higher than left field. So we need to do some additional plumbing in order to make sure that that water doesn't flow back into... JJ, help me out here. And just so it doesn't flow back into the system. So we found out recently that that was going to be an additional $7,500. So what I'm asking for is that we pay that additional $7,500. So a grand total of $22,500 from the Park Development Fund in order to pay for the irrigation. JJ, did I do that okay or?
Fantastic job Sean.
I'm not a water, so I follow.
Sean, is this still expected to be done this, this year or?
Yes, they're expected to be onsite this week actually with your...
Okay.
I think that's why I came ahead of the meeting as a separate item. But Sean did ask for some feedback from committee members and no one had any issues. He totally wanted to bring it ahead so that the project could go on as scheduled if we approved.
And this ultimately will save labor, obviously, because right now it's, somebody's going out there and hooking up the hose and, you know, watering that field. So we'll gain from that because it would be automatic whenever the timer goes on.
And they will walk during the day too, which is less of a different time to water.
Yep.
Heidi, exactly. Right now we do have the water during the day, which is not hot enough. So we'll be digging in bed, so nighttime watering is not a requirement.
Any questions, comments from board members?
Heidi, do you know when the 30 days for the Community Park Pickleball Courts is up?
When the, what, for the pickleball court?
The 30 days to paint it?
Heidi, if I may, it should be about October 1st.
October 1st?
Is, so if it's got a temperature requirement, is there a possibility that might not get done till next spring?
There, it's a, it's a real slight possibility in terms of those, those folks, they're really comfortable putting out the coating. Again, we, if it gets cold and stays cold, then we have a problem. I really don't think we can do that. We really need about three days of temperatures that remain above 50, 50 degrees. But I think we're going to be fine.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments from board members?
I'll make a motion that we approve taking the additional $7,500 from the undesigned portion of the Park Development Fund for a total of $22,000 to complete the project.
All right. Thank you Heidi. Thank you Sarah, is there a second?
Second.
Brittany, all right. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
That's all I had from committee unless anyone else has any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Utility, Chris please.
Our last meeting was on the 17th. We didn't meet a couple of days ago because there wasn't enough on the agenda. But in August, we talked about, Josh and Shaka went over the Water and Sewer Master Planning Update and how we might need to go forward with our expanding population. That took up the bulk of the time. And we also talked, discussed and considered upgrading the emergency and standard locate notification process. Apparently the former process was done by fax and was overall pretty inefficient because they'd have to come back and check to see if any faxes, faxes had come in to see if there are any locates. So we approved doing a more efficient system where they can be in the field and get notifications then.
And that's all I got.
I don't know if there's anything else, any questions for Chris?
All right. Next then up is the Library Board. David?
Yep, we met Wednesday, August 17th. We got an update on the feasibility study by the Sweeney Group. So that was interesting. We gave a quick update on the local library visits, the data collection, the outreach database, which I still have to get mine in there. We talked, we discussed and revised the budget request, the 2023 budget, budget requests? Trying to read it off the agenda here. Then we created committees and then we discussed and considered the proposed position description for hiring of a part-time library director. The friends gave a report and our next meeting is September 21st at 6:00 PM. Cindy, any, anything I missed?
I can hear, "Driving with Children." I don't know, does anyone have any questions? I can't answer them, but I understand what we covered.
I couldn't understand it.
I think she said if, if anybody has any questions, she's here or available. I think that's what I got.
Your ears are better than mine.
Yeah, sorry, I'm driving with children.
Oh, good.
We've, a number of us have been there, so good luck. Yes, drive safe. All right. Any questions for David on that? All right, then we will move on to Tourism. Melissa, sorry, did you grow?
We met last week, or last month, last week, feels like last week. And we reviewed the application that, Erin, did we come up with a final approval of an application or?
Yeah, I think it was approved, there's some recommendations and Gabe's already put together a form he can fill out online.
Yep, there's a spot on our Discover Cottage Grove, there's a tourism page where it has the form already built into it.
Right. That was a lot of our discussion. We also talked a little bit about the Centennial Celebration. And we realized that we should review again what the Tourism Commission does compared to a tourism entity that would hold the room tax. So we're reviewing that at our meeting on Wednesday morning then. Was there anything else you want?
I don't, no, I don't think so, I've covered it.
So, but if anybody has ideas for the Centennial Celebration that helps bring people to our community that generates room tax, please feel free to come to our Tourism Commission meeting or email Gabe.
All right. Next up then Law Enforcement Committee. I'll take a swing at this. So we met on the 23rd of August. Main new business item was just looking at the capital budget for replacing the car cameras systems. The number of them are, are getting beyond their useful life. And so with what is now the body camera system and everything, it's, it's time to get them all synced up and everything and replaced. So that was, we'll all see that as consideration for the budget for 2023. So we do have that going through. The committee did approve, approve at least that draft for consideration. Moving on then, as far as activity around the community. Fortunately, things have been fairly quiet. You know, officers have been engaging, particularly in certain areas with speeding and some other things going on. But knock on wood, we haven't seen the rash of, of the stolen vehicles and those type of things that we did a bit ago. As Chief said, a number of those individuals are now in, in the system or in, you know, not available to, to take part in those activities. So that's a good thing for all the communities around Dane County and hopefully it can help.
And John, just to make a shameless plug, prior to this, we, prior to the village board meeting, we did a town hall that focused on auto thefts. John Bowman came from the county and did a really good talk and Gabe recorded it for us. So we will put it in all the places that you can view it. And so you can, you'll learn more than you ever wanted to know about auto thefts and why they're, why they've declined and why we hope we won't see the return of them. That's not to say there won't ever be auto thefts, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that as far as youths stealing cars in the Dane County area, that we've, they've done a lot of really good work. And so, good news is, is that we don't, we still need to be vigilant, but it's not as, at the height it was, that it was at one time. And again, we'll, again, shameless plug, we'll have the video up here in a week or so and you'll be able to view that, so, thanks.
Thank you David. And that's through Briar Patch, right?
Briar Patch did connect us to John, but John did come from the county and John works a lot with Briar Patch. But Briar Patch helped it very much so, so, thanks to them as well.
All right. Next up then for Law Enforcement, just like a lot of other committees, we'll be looking at the other parts of the operational budget and the overall strategy. Chief will be walking through, us through that at our next meeting in September. Sarah, did I miss anything? I don't know if Chief's on, but if he is, if I missed anything, shout out. Otherwise, we'll move on then to Public Works. We have a couple of discuss and considers, so Heidi, please.
I do, thank you. Public Works met last week. And to start off the meeting, we did have a public comment that I wanted to mention from Chair Hampton next door. He wanted to talk about some erosion that some neighbors next to West Lawn Development have noticed in water from the development. So asked Josh to continue to update us on their erosion control measures and any additional things they'll, they'll be doing to make sure that that doesn't occur in the spring. Then we also had visit from residents that live on Forestin concerning some village-owned property that's behind houses on Forestin, between Forestin and Main Street. And there's not really access, there's no access, right? In this public property?
No, we have easements, but that's for the student sanctuary, not a public access.
And so it's been utilized as just kind of extra open space behind people's yards. The Main Street properties are very deep and then the Forestin, they... And then the Forest Inn, they keep their swing sets on it, they maintain it. There's trees growing back there. So there, there was a resident that cut down some trees in that area. So looking for, the residents were concerned. And then Public Works Department wanted some additional guidance from the committee on how to handle that. It was a very unique property situation, so there'll be some more updates. But if you hear from any residents in that area, may have some concerns about that. I don't know if there's, we didn't really come to any determination on what we might do with that going forward, but we're looking into a couple of options.
Yep.
Then, of course, pedestrian and bike comprehensive plan is in the works. That'll get some additional feedback from probably the Parks Committee before it comes before us. Solar panels and sidewalk maintenance, we talked about those here. Then we have a discuss and consider on the Commerce Park clock, which has not been operational in quite some time. And it's a very challenging piece to keep maintained. So the proposal is to remove the clock. It's out in front of Summit. And it would be potentially replaced with a bench or something of the sorts in that little circle turnaround out in front of Summit. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, that's perfect.
JJ, can you just comment, there was a sentence in the memo that said, "Just recently, employee at Summit received a request to fix the clock," and they passed the request under another statement. So?
I'm thinking, I can't recall the title, but I'm going through a work order system they have. An employee must have thought it was a Summit clock.
Oh.
Over to me.
Somebody should make that work. I'm gonna fill out a ticket. Okay, interesting, thanks.
So we do have, yeah, discuss and consider moving forward then with that plan for removal.
Heidi, just one, one additional comment through the university projects, a collaboration on like, one of the projects is beautification, art and culture. So there could be an opportunity there for something else in the, in the future as well in addition to whatever we do here in the meantime, so.
JJ's heard all about my enthusiasm for beautification, so yes, I think that's a great idea.
JJ, what happens once you remove it? Like, is it, you're just gonna cap it, you're gonna tape it, you're gonna?
Yeah, we probably use an electrician we use a lot that would just kind of safety off the power there. And then cap it off. I think, yeah, it should be able to be pulled back to the, if I recall correctly, a box that's already existing there. And then, yeah.
Okay.
Forget about it.
I noticed there isn't an expense or dollar amount listed with this recommendation. Do you have any sense of how?
I'm gonna guess a few hundred dollars at the most.
Oh, okay.
So there is electricity going there, though. It just doesn't work, the clock doesn't work.
Clock doesn't work. It's old file bound, it was soon after it was installed, and a couple of visits, and then it seems like it just went away. It's difficult to get the one company that does the clock here. So I understand the frustration from even before I was here with trying to get somebody to fix that clock.
So that, that's village-owned property that is canceled?
You want the clock? We can like have an auction or something, we could do something fun with the clock.
Auction it off. Could be like a Back to the Future theme.
Yeah, there you go. So we needed somebody speeding down through there. All right, so that's discuss and consider for the potential removal of the Commerce Park clock.
I'll make a motion to remove the Commerce Park clock.
All right, thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Heidi, then the next one, go ahead.
So then the next is concerning some construction modifications to Village Hall and the Municipal Services Building. So as we've read about, talked about, there are some space needs that we have. And with some modifications, we could put a kind of a Band-Aid temporary solution that are relatively cost-effective. So I think the first one is here in Village Hall. Get Gabe, I think it's a window out into the office area, is that kind of what I'm?
Yep, initially, yeah, it's outside. But after meeting with Randy Becker and talking about the supply chain challenges on the particular matching windows and then the cost of the mason, Gabe graciously said, "Just something I can see outside of the closet." So I think we can do just an interior window faster and way cheaper.
Who'd be into Matt's office?
Slide through, you know, pass notes.
That'd be way too dangerous.
That, that would not be cool.
So then the other project would be at Municipal Services Building. So then we're going through the break room over to the former Chair site. And then Parks and Rec would be in that area. Is that kind of what I'm gathering? JJ, where do you, I mean, it puts kind of a space for you two, but I don't remember where that landed.
I would probably then move out of the conference room and into what is now Trista's office. Still probably make it more of a, I won't bring all my stuff back, but more of a landing spot. But I think that this one, you know, while it's a Band-Aid, I think it may, it'll, it'll check a lot of boxes. Just they can program over there, but have access to the break room and things, so. It's a, it's a good fix.
And one feedback that I will say that the committee pointed out, or at least one committee member pointed out, that we are growing and we should continue to keep that in mind, that our space needs will continue to grow, but that this would be a good, a good option to accommodate the growth we've incurred so far. They wanted me to pass that along.
JJ, what's, I know we have the, the budget, right? I'm just curious what the total cost is for these two projects?
I believe it's forty-three thousand, if you take the general fund portion and the percentage of the buildings that are utility. We haven't spent anything this year. So, I mean, it is, it lands well under the budget. Yep.
And we can find a contractor actually do it?
That, I, I was hoping everybody's happy with the local one that finally responded to me and came out and offered a proposal, because there's not a lot of folks looking to do work now.
Okay.
Or they have enough, I suppose.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the modifications to Village Hall and the Municipal Services Building as written in the memo.
All right, thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Sarah? Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right. Anything else?
We had Engineers Report, which went over all of our various projects and what stages they're in. And I'm sure that if Josh was on or JJ, they'd be happy to answer any questions on that. Otherwise, that's all I have unless there are questions. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Next up then, Plan Commission. So we met on September fourteenth. Covered a few items. We had a public hearing for the application for Downrins to expand, for conditional use, to expand their tasting room. And they're at 300 Progress Drive. The commission then had opened and closed that public hearing. No one from the public spoke out. We did have an email, I think, from a local property owner that was okay with that, as well as in the packet, there was the building owner certainly wasn't, was in favor of it as well. Then the commission discussed it, gave their approval for consideration for this board. Next then, we had again, a public hearing for the Cozy Nook Cafe, again, for a conditional use permit for the indoor commercial entertainment serving of alcohol. Closed that, there were no, no one from the public raised any concerns. The commission then took that one up and again approved that. And then we held a closed session immigrants to potential bond agreement with the City of Madison. And that was a fairly short meeting for Plan Commission. So up for consideration for the board then is, the first one is the application from Downrins Distillery for approval amendment for an existing conditional use permit for expansion of tasting room within the existing building at 300 Progress Drive. Aaron, I don't know if you want to give a, I mean, some of us heard this, but the rest of the board certainly hasn't given overview and any conditions.
I think you pretty well covered it. This is all happening within the existing building, they're renting more space, changing that new space into some of their manufacturing and then changing some of the manufacturing into expanded tasting room. It's just good to see them growing. They do a lot of good events over there and there's a lot left to do for that. We had no conditions on the approval.
Okay. I don't know if anybody from Downrins is on the line, but I, open it up. Oh, hey, Abby. I don't know if you want to say anything, Abby or Nick, or if you, we can take questions from the, from the board, if there are any. Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just have one quick question, Abby and Nick, or maybe when I remember a couple years ago, you first opened, you were talking about having tasting room up on the second floor. Or did I dream that?
No, you didn't dream that.
Okay. But that's not part of this plan?
No, I mean, technically, that's like a part of the space at this point. But it's not a structural area, like it's just a basically a false ceiling. And we did get quotes to put in the image to make that structural, because that would have been a requirement, and it was caused from the weather, so. At this time, that's not being planned yet, maybe not, but then this is not.
Thank you, I just wanted to check my, my memory on that. This is a very outside Dane expansion. So I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow the expansion of the indoor commercial entertainment land with the alcohol.
Second.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Abby, thanks, Nick, for coming out and hanging with us. Uh, next. Yep. You too. Next then, is discuss and consider the application for the Cozy Nook. Again, conditional use for indoor entertainment serving alcohol at their location, I believe it's right next to the Dollar General.
This has been a couple of different restaurants over the years, going back on the Village. But this is the first one that's pursued a liquor license. It's a new business, just looking for ways to get people in there. And we saw no objections to this either.
All right, thanks, Aaron. I don't know, anybody from the Cozy Nook is on, but. Any questions, comments from board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Cozy Nook Cafe for approval of a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment serving alcohol land use.
Thank you, David. Is there a second? Thank you, Chris. That's all right. There, Brittany, you got it. There's a little delay. All right, any, it's been motion second, any further discussion then?
Can I just, can you tell maybe or somebody, is indoor commercial entertainment, is entertainment the alcohol, or I'm confused, what's the?
Yeah, it's a question that comes up, that's just how we label restaurants, bars, any kind of?
Entertainment.
All right. Any other discussion? Having heard no more then, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right. Next then, up is reports from village officers, starting off with our attorney, Larry.
I'm just wondering if you have our ordinance done yet?
All right. Next up, we have communication and Miss Lynn's business. To start off then, is to consider the approval of the vouchers. Any questions or comments? We do have two bill lists there because we missed our meeting earlier in the month.
Do we have to approve them separately, or can we approve them together?
Question for?
Probably takes longer to ask the question than make the two. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented. You can list the dates and all, all right.
Second.
I think that was.
I think we'll listen to that one.
All right. Motion second, any further discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up then, we have correspondence. I did have one resident reach out and ask about Amazon and just an update. And I just let them know that we're working on the developers' agreement with Amazon currently and with the plan right now for, their plan for 2023 construction. So that was the only thing I received in the last week, other than the speeders responses to, or the people complaining about speeders.
I did have one thing to, I guess, it would fall under correspondence. Carpe approved the urban service area amendment that we had done. So since I wear a pair of hats, then correspond back to you that I did approve. I think there was one no vote, but overwhelmingly supportive.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, next then, we have upcoming community events as we start to, I hate to say, move into fall. I don't mind fall, it's the thing after that I don't care for.
But then that'll be Christmas and stuff.
Okay, there you go. Now you just cheered me up, thanks.
I'll put in a plug for Parks and Rec, they have their touch it truck on Saturday. My daughter's really looking forward to it. And it doesn't conflict with any Magic Football game, so that's even better.
Priorities, man.
So the parents are happy too. Or at least one parent is. Any other community events, folks? Then, future agenda items? All that budget stuff, start talking more about that, that'll get rolling a lot in the upcoming piece. That'll be the big one. Go ahead, Melissa.
I was just wondering, could you, Matt or Cameron, with the shared revenue, could you give us what the village has gotten like the past decade or so, just so that we can see what the state gives to our community? Since I think it just came out recently from the DOR, or what we're getting next year. But I know it's way low, so.
Like, like a five or 10-year history of it?
Yeah, 10 years, I think.
Just shared revenue, or should we have like transportation?
Yeah, that would be good.
You want to throw a turn light on that?
Yeah.
For all of us really get upset? Are, I mean, informed?
Not a future, well, it is, will be a future agenda item, but we have a special board, special joint meeting with Budget Review Committee and Library Board and the Village Board on Monday to talk about the long-range financial management plan. And then that will lead into the board considering that plan at the first meeting in October. Yeah, at 5:30 for that one.
All right, anything else? Okay. Okay, we'll be busy. All right, then, I will go down to item 10, and this is a motion to go into closed session regarding negotiation position regarding Deer Grove EMS and joint fire agreements. The Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, PRC 1, PRC E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, divesting of public funds, the conducting of other public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. And then we'll do a roll call with that, and then I'll move into the next one.
Ballwick, here. Murphy?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.